Okay. We will call this November twelfth business meeting to an end. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which stands one nation under God.
In Mexico, with the rich and tough that grow.
From Jerry, do you want to do our goal?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Here in District forty-four, we have four main goals. Goal number one, each student will improve academically each year. Number two, our schools will be safe, inclusive, and welcoming. Number three, we will strengthen family and community engagement and support partnerships for student learning. And number four, we will maintain and improve our facilities to meet the current and future needs of our students, staff, and community.
Thank you, Jerry, very much. Um, so there are any public comments tonight? Approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes and piano to the comment. October eighth and October twenty-second.
I'm sure we approve the minutes as written.
Jerry. It's definitely awesome. Thanks, Rainy. But Jerry sent it by Rainy on paper. Okay, hopefully we had any public correspondence. But now it's time for our student trustee report with Jake Dunker.
All right, so school report for November twelfth. Um, starting off the high school, we, as I mentioned in my last report, we took the PSAT, or excuse me, sophomores, juniors took it. We ended up having two days of testing because there were so many people who signed up, so that would be one hundred thirty testers in total, which is just great. I don't actually know if they've gotten their scores back. That will be to be determined. Um, and then just a little bit about the PSAT, it's qualifying test for National Art Scholarship, so it's fairly for students to receive some national recognition as well as get some possible money. Uh, November first was the end of our first quarter, with that came the parent-teacher conferences on Friday. Uh, there was very good turnout for that, pretty much the entire parking lot was full and most, I believe most teachers had a parent come and speak to them about some students, that's just a great way to get some community feedback. Some exciting things for the students, flex for pretty much our, our study hall. If you meet certain requirements, you are able to go off-campus for your flex, and so that's kind of a good way to incentivize students to, you know, just stay up to date on their work, meet those requirements, be a little bit better students, and then for those who don't meet the requirements, they can stay on campus and then get the important help that they need, so that's just a great opportunity. So far, there have been seventy juniors and seventy seniors who have qualified throughout campus. So kind of reducing the clutter in the school as well as incentivizing better grades. Um, recently, the administration has been gathering data on which students need specific help, and that has been mainly through the MTSS, which is the multi-tiered system of support, and that is a three-layer pyramid, starting off with tier one, which is what all students receive, uh, it's classes, clubs, et cetera, just anything within a school. Moving on to tier two, it's for those students who need a little bit more help, and that's what the administration has been focusing on a lot recently. Uh, so something they've been working on recently is called the B-Day Cafe tutoring, so that's Tuesdays and Thursdays, there's tutoring in the school cafe, uh, led through the National Art Society students, as well as some teachers, so a good way for students to get some help. And then tier three of that pyramid is strategic individual targeted help, such as, uh, individualized education plans for our special education programs. And so like I said earlier, we're really focusing on that tier two, just kind of helping out those students who need a little bit more help, not the, the base level, just improving their help a little bit more. Um, for sports and activities, volleyball divisionals was over the weekend in Porvalis, and sadly, they were knocked out of the tournament by Big Fork, I believe it was. Uh, football made it to the quarterfinals, which I don't know the last time they did that, but everyone was saying it had been a while. So that's very exciting. Uh, that game's over the weekend against Billings Central, and sadly, they also, uh, lost. Um, for boys soccer, they lost three to two also against Billings Central in double overtime, and they made state championships, that was a very sad lose, however, it was great that they made it all the way to state championship, kind of a good way to get our name out there. And then girls soccer lost in the semifinals against Billings Central, so that was three games against Billings Central, that we drove to all of them. The track and sixer budget ties because we are doing all of the driving. For the other winter sports, I believe basketball, both boys and girls, and then swim have started doing some, I guess, open gyms, but not really official practices. And then speech and debate has had two tournaments already, uh, two weeks, two weeks ago, one in Kalispell, and then last weekend, one in Kornike Falls. At both tournaments, uh, as a team, we placed second, so that was a pretty good way to start off the season so far. Um, the Veterans Day Assembly, I saw a few of you there yesterday, and I'm sure that anyone who was there would agree that it was a very beautiful ceremony, that was just a, a really good thing for our veterans. We had Naval Captain Janet Bristol and a few student guest speakers give, uh, speeches throughout the assembly. There were performances from the band and orchestra, there are veterans from almost every single branch of the military, I believe there were over seventy-five veterans there, so that was great, and then there was a complimentary luncheon afterwards for the veterans and their family members, which was run by our culinary and hospitality classes. And then the main assembly was put together by the student council, and so it was a great way for students to actually get involved with this community event that is usually just run by administration, we had a student council, and then the class is running it this year, so that was a really, really nice ceremony. Um, the counselors, WHS, are doing once-a-month scholarship and BAFTA help, which is nice as the college application season is getting in full swing, and it's nice to get a early head start on those, uh, scholarships and BAFTA, BAFTA, excuse me. Uh, the drum club will be doing their production of Blue November fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, seven P M. at the Forum Garden Center. Uh, it is eight dollars for adults and five dollars for students, so if you have some extra time, Thursday, Friday, or Saturday at seven P M., definitely go check that out. Um, then lastly for the high school, uh, Free Flow, which is our water conservation club, will be doing a multi-day trip to Yellowstone National Park. And that's kind of, that's a great trip for really anyone who's not just involved in environmental science, but really anyone, it's Yellowstone National Park, that's pretty cool. Um, some other trips that they do, for example, would be, they've gone on surfing trips on the Oregon coast, they've gone, they've floated the Colorado River. Uh, it's just kind of a outdoors club for really any outdoors enthusiasts, and so it's a great opportunity for our students. Uh, moving on to middle school, mass testing started taking place this week and next, and mass testing is Montana aligned standards through year testing. Uh, it's statewide assessments in grades three through eight in the areas of math and E L A. for all general population students, so the good way to compare our district against the rest of the state, see how we're doing as a whole, hopefully get those top-ranking positions. Uh, the WMS bands had their first band concert on October twenty-second. Uh, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade all performed for the first time this year, and all shows were made with great reviews and lots of applause, so that's a nice, nice thing to hear for our bands and orchestra programs. Uh, Halloween at the middle school, as across the entire district, all grades of staff were encouraged to dress up for Halloween, and there was a very good turnout of uh, costumes across the entire district. The student council hosted the annual Halloween dance for seventh and eighth graders, and there were two hundred sixty-six students that attended, which is seventy-five percent of the seventh and eighth grade student body, so again, student council at the middle school showing off what they can do and seeing that they have a big impact on the school as a whole. Student council again, showing their power, started the penny war, uh, the two raise funds for the North Valley Food Bank. This currently will be week two of the war, and so far, over six hundred dollars in cash has been raised. And battle will rage on until Friday, November twenty-second, so hopefully most likely, there will be more than a thousand dollars raised throughout this entire penny war, and that's just a great thing for the North Valley Food Bank and great for our students to show that they really care about our community. Um, seventh and eighth grade boys' basketball has just started, they have two teams, uh, for both seventh and eighth grade, and both of them have full rosters being twelve per team, which is forty-eight total, uh, players, so that's a, another great program that we are capitalizing on here at the middle school. And then also, just as with the high school, there was the end of quarter one, which was a very successful quarter and had attendance rates up from last year, so also good to see. Uh, for Muldown, keeping it short and sweet, they successfully survived Halloween flots dress-ups, as with the district. Um, parent-teacher conferences were completed last, uh, last Friday, attendance was very high, just as with the high school, I can attest to this, drove by, and that parking lot was full, more full than it is on usual school days, so that's, I mean, that's, that's great to hear that the elementary school parents are getting there. Um, Muldown is on the trimester system, so their trimester, their first trimester ends November twenty-second, which means first report cards for the year. For an elementary student, that is somewhat important, but, uh, for everyone else in, in the school and the parents, that's a very big deal. Um, mass testing is also taking place at Muldown for those third and fourth graders, that will be completed on the twenty-second of November, just restating what I agree that you said, a great way to compare ourselves, our district to the rest of the state, and hopefully get those top-ranking spots that we very much deserve. Um, and then the second graders are preparing for their first music program scheduled for December twelfth. I don't have many details on that, but it's a second-grade music program, so I'm sure it will be nominal, no matter what they're doing. Um, and then just a little district-wide takeaway, what I kind of got from everyone is that first quarter flew by, and second quarter came out of nowhere, no one saw it coming. And then as all activities come to a close and winter begins, hopefully let's ride this moment well into the Christmas season and all the way to the end of the semester. Thank you.
Good job, you.
Good job.
Really good job.
Very thorough.
I know. Any questions or take?
How do you?
Few helpers who helped, helped me reach out to the other principals of, uh, schools.
Really impressive.
Very much.
Very thorough. Thank you so much. I do have a question for you. Yesterday, maybe I don't know if you can answer it. I was so impressed with how many students are in the music programs.
Yes.
Do you have any idea what the numbers are?
It's like a hundred kids.
There were like a hundred, yes, it did, it seemed like a hundred kids in the orchestra and band, the choir, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Wow.
Numbers are up. About a hundred and, and like you said, in the combined band and orchestra, and then, um, the inquiry said he's pushing forty, not all of them were participating in yesterday's event.
Just the growth there is.
Yeah.
Tell them congratulations.
Yeah.
And that it sounded great.
And yes.
It was really great, and Jake, also, you did a great, beautiful call.
Thank you.
What was the poetry award that you won?
I got third place in the state for poetry out loud.
Totally easy to see by yesterday.
Going for first this year.
Now you can do it.
Yeah. It's a little competitive streak that comes across and reading on these.
It's very, yeah, it's awesome.
You're the, um, W H S true leader.
I know.
It's great. Well, absolutely, district. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, and to that, another one more question, the mass testing, is it less intense this year, or is it the same, did they make any adjustments?
It is fewer than last year in terms of numbers throughout the year, number of times we give it. But maybe.
Uh, there are four testlets sprinkled throughout the year. Four testing windows. There's window one, window two, to window three, and then there's an anchor testlet at the end of the year.
So it'll be happening throughout the year again?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, each grade level or content area was able to choose which testlets they wanted to give in each window. So there was some, little bit of ownership there. However, they will not see the results of those testlets until the window closes. And the first window closes November twenty-second.
Lisa, how much school time does that do those tests take?
The test makers will tell you that they should only take twenty to twenty-five minutes. Uh, and I haven't heard from, most of the grade levels or content area, areas are giving it this week. Uh, and I haven't heard, um, how long that's taking them. We did run into a little bit of a snafu today, uh, fourth and fifth grade were trying to give the mass testlets. Um, and because of the way the testlets are designed, they can't all take them at the same time. So an i-ready, it's not an issue for the district to, for all fourth grade to take tests at the same time. But because of the way this testlet is created, I was visiting with Jacob about this today. Um, it just uses a lot of bandwidth, and our system just can't handle it, and it's because of the, kind of the clunkiness of the test. So we had, we had to have some, um, classrooms shift gears and uh, wait to take it another time, so we're, we're still working out the kinks there. Let's see.
Well, we start music.
And unfortunately, Rainy, this test is required.
I know.
Not.
That's the hard part about it.
Required for, yeah, for the state of Montana, isn't it something we can
adjust?
Adjust or choose not to give it. We have to, every, every third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grader that is, um, enrolled in the school is obligated to take it, we must ensure a ninety-seven, I think it's ninety-seven percent um, attendance rate on this test.
And, I mean, our funding is way better than most many schools, I mean, for I T. et cetera.
Mm-hmm, and even Jacob will tell you, you know, he's been, they've been working on bandwidth and, like I said, it isn't an issue when we do the i-ready test.
So other schools are likely to have the same problem. So it's the way the test is put together?
Correct. Ja- Jacob, um, shared with me, uh, I, he said, imagine, um, it's a Honda compared to a Ford engine. And he just said they just, one is much more detailed and has things worked out, and one's a little bit more simpler and clunkier. And he just said, um, that's what's causing the extra issues for us.
Like it's poor gas mileage.
That's right.
And it is ours.
I guess, you know, there's nothing we can do to change the situation besides advocate for changes, and you guys have done that, so thank you.
Correct.
Thank you.
We'll give them that feedback.
We did give them that feedback, yes, and, and hopefully the makers of the test, which are quite new, um, can work on that issue.
Well, thanks for working with me.
Thank you.
Awesome. Think we have a W A. W C E. A. report tonight? We'll move on into our discussion, action items, starting with an exciting one from Principal Drown about our artist's display.
Yeah, just quickly, um, I was, I attended a, um, an event for the Stumptown Art Studio this summer, and, uh, actually, I was drawn in to help emcee this event. Um, and it was a, is a display of, of local artists' work, and there were some bidding processes, and it was, it was designed as a fundraiser. And at that event, I was approached by Steve and Nancy Cadre, local artist, uh, Nancy has an incredible exhibit that is, it's a traveling exhibit, some of you had a chance to see it at Whitefish High School recently. But they approached me and said, hey, we'd like to put this thing up on display and not have it just in storage, it deserves to be out, and it has, uh, it's designed to be traveling and, and spend a little time at Whitefish High School. And I said, well, what, what, what are we talking about here, you know? And she's, you know, these, each piece is like this, and there are twenty-five pieces or so, um, but as I looked into it, um, so at the moment, I was like, I don't know where we have enough wall space, and I'm just processing this, as I got onto the website and I looked at the, I got some information, I looked at the quality, and I said, there is no way we can pass up this opportunity. It is, um, a special, um, series of paintings. She put this together, this exhibit is, in, in their writing on their website, says, "An exhibit challenging us to protect our wild places and honor the legacy of Glacier National Park." It is titled Forever Glacier. Nancy, in Nancy's words, she says, "As a glacier centennial artist, and with the park so close in proximity and near to my heart, I wanted to create a series of large colorful silk paintings honoring each of the seventeen large mammals and three additional pieces showing groupings of all the small mammals who ha- who live or have lived in Glacier Park, where they have adequate habitat to sustain themselves." So there's a great story behind this, and, and it includes some Native American, um, perspective as well, so uh, they came in, they hung up the, the artwork in our school, we found the wall space, and it's, and it's just a beautiful addition to our, our hallways at the school. Um, I asked Claire Knighton, one of our, um, primary art teachers, if she would, um, work with Steve and Nancy with some additional ideas that they have in terms of how do we get, uh, maybe more K-12 kind of exposure uh, to the artwork and, and some of the curriculum work that, that they put together that goes with it. Um, and Claire had already been in contact with them, and, and so it, it all came together very nicely, and they've had some follow-up meetings. And that's what Claire's here to share a little bit tonight, is just a little bit about that gallery and some of the, the further ideas, um, associated with that, so this is Claire Knighton.
Thanks for having me tonight. Yeah, so I teach ninth through twelfth grade at the high school, um, all two-D art, we have a separate teacher that teaches three-D art, so I teach intro art all the way to art one, um, art two, advanced art, and art three, so I teach all the painting, drawing, making classes at the high school, um, so yeah, I've known Nancy and Steve for a long time, they are great members of our community and artists, and they're always finding ways to engage, um, teenagers by having me bring my students to their gallery, or they could come in and do artist talks too, so just, it's an amazing opportunity to have her artwork at our high school and um, weaving in some cross-curricular projects, um, so I've reached out to all of the teachers K through twelve, inviting them to come visit the exhibit, and if they need me to help with anything, like, um, I can help as far as like even doing like a little tour through the pieces too, so, um, yeah, just a great way to weave in history, um, earth science, biology, English language arts, um, there's even some, each piece will have like, uh, the Blackfeet name for the mammal that's listed on it, so a way of um, talking about like native people to Glacier National Park and weaving in that history. Um, there's a whole Dropbox file that the Cadres have put together of resources that teachers can use to help with lesson planning, um, and bringing their students over, so hopefully they're not intimidated by it. Um, that's why I also reached out and like, if you have any questions about how you can weave it into a lesson, or just even having your kids come through and look at it and ask them questions, because they're just, as Carrie said, like, really big, beautiful um, contemporary color that she uses to paint her animals, it's just magnificent, so a great way for the students just to see art. So yeah, my hope is that all the kids will have an opportunity to see it and come over and view it, um, and the teachers won't be shy to reach out if they need any help in planning things. Um, we have a scheduling of, so Jack Gladstone, he's a Native American singer-songwriter storyteller, um, who is from Browning, he's Blackfeet. And he's gonna come with Nancy during one of our flex study hall times to do a presentation for anyone that wants, at the high school that wants to come, so if any of you wanted to come for that presentation, it's gonna be on December sixteenth, so he's gonna um, sing some songs, tell some stories about some of the animals that you'll see in the art, and Nancy will talk about her art-making process. Um, I'm planning on weaving in some projects, definitely on color, her use of color theory in her paintings is phenomenal, so I'm gonna do that with all of my classes, I guess, great opportunity. Um, yeah, are there, I think I covered most of the things I wanted to share, um, any questions about the exhibit?
I was just curious, has it been at any other schools?
No, not that I'm aware, so I, I know it was at the C M. Russell Museum in Gray Falls, and then it's been at the Hockaday Museum, and Carrie is just saying it was actually in, um, St. Louis.
In St. Louis, Missouri.
Yeah, um, and I know that they're looking, they're open to ideas of any other places, if you know of any museums or galleries where it could go to, but as far as I know, we're the first school, um, yeah. And I know they would love like members of the community to come in and see it too, but unfortunately, with the way it is at the high school, um, it's kind of tricky to make that happen, but, um, they really are, yeah, open to, to more opportunities to have the art show, so. I think so.
Cool.
Yeah.
So cool how one thing supports every single one of our goals.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Improvement, facilities, welcoming schools, partnerships with the community, like, one thing you hit every single.
And just how many subject matters it can touch, like history, English language arts, I mean, even our math teacher, one of our geometry teachers is gonna do something in her geometry lab class of bringing students over, so, um, I mean, yeah, you could talk about like composition, a rule of thirds in math and art too, so, yeah, lots of subjects it can touch on and interweave.
So it just seems like a natural lens itself lends itself to school, so.
Yeah, and all the paintings are actually organized by ecosystem, so if you, um, go up the stairs, first, I think it's like more, um, bigger land mammals, and then it goes to like rivers and streams and animals that live off of the animals that are in the stream, so, um, it's, it's cool how should they even displayed it that way too, to really touch on, yeah, the specialness of Glacier Park, the history of the Blackfeet people in Glacier Park, and um, also, they wanted to bring a lot of awareness of the, um, impact of global warming for Glacier with, you know, the glaciers getting smaller, but how like picas are really impacted by climate change, um, so, yeah, they, it's pretty amazing.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
That really inspiring art, but a whole nother to have someone like you who can bring it to life.
Oh, thanks. It's really fun, yeah.
So thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks for being here today.
Yeah.
Also, thank you to Stephen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. It would be fun if we could have some kind of, uh, evening meeting there and then show the, the parents or whomever came to it, I mean.
We did.
Well, I mean. In K-12 Connect, did you take them there? Well, we did that for us, but I had, I mean, that was one group, and we're gonna come together.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
But maybe there could be a different.
Right.
Thank you.
And Amy, how are you? Okay. Um, we're gonna move on to our professional development plan with our curriculum director, Lisa Bloom.
Thank you.
Greetings.
Greetings from the curriculum department. Uh, can you pull up those two, is that possible? The attachment?
Uh, yeah.
Is that possible?
Great.
Okay, I have a couple things I want to share with you tonight, first of all, uh, we just want to make one minor revision to the current professional development plan. Um, because when we changed the calendar last year to accommodate the basketball tournament, we had to change a professional development day. And we moved that professional development day from a Monday to a Friday. So you will notice, that's the only change on the professional development plan, is that January day um, from a Monday to a Friday, and actually, it's a half of a professional development day because the other half is a record-keeping day for staff. Um, questions about that is all? All right. Yeah, I think, yep, I think that's the first one day. Yes, so you will see uh, that first one, if you scroll down all the way down to the bottom, everything is the same except for that, uh, January day, January twenty-fourth. And just a reminder of those days, the August twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh are those two days before school starts. That September thirtieth is a full day. Um, October seventeenth and eighteenth are the state M E A convention. So we allow staff to attend that, if they choose not to, then they have to, um, make up twelve P I R. on their own. Uh, and then um, the November date is conference time, and then that half a day in January. Questions about that at all?
Questions about that at all? All right, the other document I want to share and Dave, if you could just flip to that other document. I wanted to give you a little bit of an update of what actually did we do on those days? So those October or excuse me, the August twenty sixth and twenty seventh day. Days, we had Mark Schumacher come. And I just wanted to share with you that feedback about him being here included um appreciation for the humor and lightheartedness. Of his presentation, um, people, staff members um felt that he was very motivational, he was engaging. And he was much better than a business starting to be here, we heard that loud and clear in the district professional development meeting. Uh, they also had time at um those first two days before school. Um, to meet as buildings, to meet as grade levels or content area cohorts and to have classroom time. And staff members reported that they felt that was adequate and much needed time to prep for the beginning of the school year. Both independently and collaboratively, and they felt that the staff and grade level meetings were effective and efficient use of their time. Um, and basically said, don't touch those two days before school. The September thirtieth day, uh, we worked really hard to try to. Ensure that we had something for everyone. And uh, if you'll notice, I organized it in such a way that we were trying to address the goals of the district. So the two areas that we really focused on were each student will improve academically each year. And we had a number of sessions that fell into that category. So C K L A training was our new reading program and um K five was involved in that. Into math is our math training and we did a do over. And the reason why we did kind of a do over of into math training. When we adopted that math curriculum, it was during COVID, we were just kind of coming out of COVID and the training was virtual. And it was really hard to get a really good grasp of the curriculum with that virtual training. And there were some holes that um teachers felt that they had. And if we brought an in person. Here to discuss that um program, they felt that that might be a better use of their time. Uh, and I heard lots of positive feedback on that as well. Uh, we had um P C B E training, which is personalized competency based education training. The assistant superintendents from Calisbell came up and spoke to our seven to twelve staff about that. Uh, we had magic school A I training and and our local tech department. Uh, was in charge of that, magic school A I training is currently a software program. That um teaches our staff how to use A I effectively. And some of them are even doing it with their students in a very controlled sort of way. Uh, we also had some virtual training with better lessons. Uh, we had creating routines to support self paced learning. Um, and then we had two more under our safe and inclusive welcoming. Um, schools um that was supporting classroom management with de escalation strategies. And classroom strategies to promote inclu- inclusion, interestingly. We had a number of paraprofessionals join us on our September thirtieth day. And they um were very interested in attending those sessions. So we had quite a few of our paraprofessionals attend those. Which was a little bit surprising to me, but in a good way, so I was really pleased with that. Uh, we also had um a local teacher on staff that led some training and turn it in, which is a. Program that they use um with writing papers. And then I led a session on navigating I ready, um, for those newer teachers who would like some help. Or a little bit more um explanation about that program. We also had Nate Shute come and do a um. Training on um. A session that's called the Happiness Project, they did a whole uh. Course over the summer and this was a condensed version for our staff, so. It, they were well attended, um, at, at, I think every staff member. Chose two optional sessions and then um. C K L A and into math were required for the younger grades and. P C B E and magic school A I were required for all staff, but the rest were optional. Um, and we had a lot of uh staff going in a lot of different directions in a good way. There were a couple additional sessions, Dave, if you'll scroll down a little farther. We did offer um. Stop the bleed, that was one that was um provided by Rebecca. Um, Cox from North Logan Health North. Uh, because we thought that would be beneficial and then we also had uh Google dot or a a Google suite session. Uh, for newer staff members because we are a Google school. We had a lot of staff that didn't know all the Google tools and we had our local tech staff provide that support as well. Um, so overall, oh, and the and one other one was um Indian Ed for All, we were able to bring up. A woman from Ronan who actually led a session, um, and she's employed with O P I. Who led a session on um Indian Ed for All, which was well attended. Overall, the variety of choices met individual certified needs, uh, the classified staff felt it was relevant. And it was helpful for them. Um, both the live and the virtual options were beneficial and we were pleased to see some staff that actually led some sessions. October seventeenth and eighteenth, as I shared, those are, that's the state Montana Education Association Convention. It's an opportunity for our staff to fulfill their twelve flexible um professional uh. People instruction related hours, they do not have to attend that convention. If they choose not to, they have to fulfill those hours outside of their contract date and I have to keep track of that. So and when they fulfill those hours, they must do them in two hour increments or longer. Uh, so they, there are a number of staff members who choose to do independent projects. And then um. Provide me with the documentation for that and then I award them that, those renewal units for that. November seventh, uh, the evening of November seventh and then all day of November eighth was parent teacher conferences. In our contract, we s- we have that um our staff will do nine hours of parent teacher conferences. So four to seven on November seventh and then eight thirty to three thirty on November eighth. Uh, that happens for both Muldown and the middle school. And Whitefish High School does six hours, which is that day of November eighth. And their additional three hours they use in the spring for eighth grade parent orientation. Our January twenty fourth plans for a half a day of P D include introducing our K four staff. To P C B E and magic school A I, uh, because they didn't get that in September. Uh, they'd, they also have expressed some interest in a follow up session with their new English language arts program. Uh, our older staff are the ones who um originally. Participated in the original sessions of P C B E and magic school are anxious to have another round of magic school. Uh, they would like to us to offer a session on catch on light speed. That's a program that we have in the school district for grades three and up. Which allows teachers to see the screens of their students. And they can control what's going on, their student's screens. And they just, they don't have a lot of um experience with. Uh, so they'd like, they'd like some more training on that and perhaps more C K L A um training for the fifth and sixth E L A teachers. And then Whitefish High School will be involved in the run lock fight protocols. That is something that um every school takes turns doing and this year it is Whitefish High School's turn. Uh, weekly P L Cs will continue on early release Wednesdays. Uh, and just a reminder that the first monthly meeting is for all staff information pertaining to buildings and districts. That usually happens through their staff meetings. Um, the second and third monthly meetings are for grade level and content area cohorts to review data, to discuss curriculum. Uh, the fourth monthly meeting is flexible time that we use for P or for M T S S teams. For P L C liaisons, for safety committees. And then uh. Every once in a while, we have a fifth monthly meeting, uh, I think the next one is in April. And that we try to sneak in some vertical collaboration there. Question about P D at all?
Vertical collaboration?
Yes, so vertical collaboration, Rainy, is when a grade level meets with or a content area. Meets with the people above and below them.
Of their curriculum.
Yes, yes, so they look at aligning their curriculum and making sure that uh. There's, there is some continuity between what's going on and there aren't any holes.
Wanted to make a quick comment if I could, uh, that I was just had an opportunity to attend some uh conference and meet with other superintendents. Similar sized schools and uh needs, it was interesting, P L Cs were. Part of their culture as well and rules and um. The identical format, couple of the schools where horizontal vertical and building things and. It was kind of interesting this. People arriving at the same time. Good stuff.
I just have a couple of things, being on the P D committee, there's, I would agree, uh, um. It's such a nice committee, everyone's very engaged and you know, they're vested, this is their education, so I I really like that format, so I'm not sure how. It's not very, but I just want to compliment you guys, I'm running. And the different building admin there as well. Um, and they also don't mind that I've never just write that. Um, the other thing, I guess the feedback that I do hear when I'm in that room and just listening to you talk to you, it does feel like as we have turnover in our district. It's trickier. Um, and I just don't know if there's a continuity, like if there's a way that I'm a new hire, here's your day to learn Google, here's your day to learn the curriculum. And I, you're seeing that, I know you guys are aware and I know those conversations, but I do feel like. Turnover happens and it happens more now, so there'd be nice if there was. The mentor thing is nice, but it's not quite designed for some, for whatever.
Uh, and I would agree, there's room for improvement for us to work with new staff when they are not. Um, part of that initial training. The goal is trying to figure out how to get them trained.
Yep.
And what, with what time?
What hours?
And what, yeah.
I do know, do new staff, if you're new, it's just a random question, do you, do they get? Extra paid hours to onboard kind of thing, it's different, like new orientation hours that are different than just normal P D hours that.
Yeah, they don't, but those flexible P I R that that all staff are required to um. Complete.
Yeah.
One of those, so six hours we we use for onboarding.
I see.
So they get it taken that way and then um the that K, those K five staff members. That did the initial E L A adoption in the summer.
Yeah.
And that included the new staff, because we knew they were going to come.
Yeah.
And at that point, we knew they were going to be hired, um, they also participated and they also received six hours for that. So they did, uh, you, they did get their twelve flexible P I R fulfilled in that way.
And then my other just thought was, since this is so P D, I'm just curious, again, just me not being in in the education system, but. Why are parent teacher conferences included in P D conversation? I just feel like they're different topics.
Um, they are actually pupil instructional related, which is what P A R stands for.
But I just think it says P P, professional development.
She's just listing them there because they. I think it's a good question.
Professional development, yeah, right, yeah, okay, got it. Thanks, perfect.
You bet, so.
Do you have like a spreadsheet of all the P D that's required? And then, you know, like you need the required reading in math and then people's names and. Then you check off when they don't have it and they get to see that too.
Uh, I made in, I made sure that every staff member that needed reading that. Needed reading and that had to be there, if they were not there, so. Uh, I'll give you an example, in the summer, we provided, we have that new E L A, E L A program. Initial training, we provided training in June and August. For all staff to take and they would receive six, six of those flexible renewal units for that. I couldn't make them come and we had about five staff members that chose not to come. So I had to offer another training in September. For those staff members to ensure that every one of them was trained in reading. And I do the same thing with math, in math, it wasn't an issue, I had everyone there and if they weren't there physically, they were there virtually.
Sounds like everyone has a bingo card.
I'm a P I R Nazi.
Well, it's important when you go into a new program, if you're not trained in it, the program's gonna fall apart.
It's important that all of our staff are trained appropriately. Uh, and I feel very strongly about that and I, uh, you, you know, sometimes I have staff that say, hey, can I leave early? And I say, no. You can't, I need you here for this training, it's vital that you're here.
I'll even say, you talked about that in bargaining meetings.
Well, and the other frustration is, uh, we have very little time to do that. And so I need you there, I need you, because I can't add another day to the contract. As much as I'd like to.
This is the way we fulfill our goal.
Correct.
And then um if they're not getting that training, then they are likely not going to fulfill the the goal as well.
I just wanted to mention a few things here that I think are um interesting, one of the, if the, um, we said, put this into, like you said, related to the. And how, um, what's important about that is too, our district action plan speaks to each of these areas. And which is following our goals, of course, right, and our additional district action points um talks about a lot of the specific training. Provided as well, so we're seeing this in action, that's our duty plan that we developed together. This action plan leads to professional development discussions that lead to uh those professional development. Opportunities provided um and directly related to the goals, so it's pretty cool to see.
It is, it's all very aligned and strategic and intentional.
Yeah. Um, I wanted to comment just one thing, that the updated twenty four, twenty five P M plan that just updated the date and then. That is an action item for you, because um, uh. That is actually attached to our strategic plan for accreditation purposes. That's a document that just summarizes our professional development plan and we had to update it with that date. So it is tonight, that specific component of action.
On the parent teacher conferences, I've heard interesting feedback about um. Different lengths of conferences, is there a standard time that we set? That conferences um should be run, I mean, throughout the district? Or is it something that each individual teacher can decide? Because I've heard things anywhere from ten to twenty minutes and. I know I'm a talker, but I could have never done a conference in ten minutes, whoa, you just get introduced in ten minutes.
So, great question, Jerry, and we actually uh had a discussion about that in our um administrative meeting last week. Uh, currently, the middle school and the high school. Uh, has used um a Google calendar that is very. That is very efficient. And we have shared that with Muldown so that we are consistent. Hopefully next year, we will be consistent across all three schools as far as delivering the information to our parents. As well as the amount of time we have.
Thank that, that's great, I have one other question. In the past, we always had a master schedule in the office that was available. And when parents couldn't figure out when, where they were going, they could call and ask for the master schedule. That apparently does not seem to be as easy to do anymore. Is there a way that we can make it easier? Because I know for a fact that many parents forget their, lose their slips, the kids don't get them home. And they are lost and currently, if everybody's doing their own and there's no master schedule, who knows? When all the conferences are.
Yeah, and that can, that that's an easy fix too.
Okay.
The only thing that teachers need to do is make a copy. What, once they have their Google calendar done, they just need to push print and send a copy to the office. And then, and then the administrators will have a.
Well, maybe for next year, because I know I had a couple of parents who said, well, I called and they had no idea when the conferences.
Oh, yeah. So, so we're we're hoping to put those two pieces in place. We're always looking for ways to make things more seamless and more consistent across the district.
Well, as we become computerized, sometimes we realize that some of the things in the past. Where the schedule was laid out and we just went to the kitchen and said, oh, you're at this time.
Right.
And it worked really well and nobody got lost.
Yeah, true.
Well, thank you so much for an awesome PD plan.
You're welcome.
And P I R.
Yeah, 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 PD.
So we do need. Oh, yeah, we do. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, there's support for food discussion or motion?
It's a wonderful plan and thank you for bringing it to us.
I will just make one other comment, I hope in the future always and you'll always see this um when I propose things. To always have those P I R days on Mondays, because when we have them on Fridays, we lose our coaches. And this one just couldn't be avoided because. By the calendar.
It's interesting as a parent, it's nice to have them not always. Right, they get a three day weekend either way, it's not, wouldn't work. And we approve um we um changed. PD as presented.
Thank you Quincy. Great, moved by Quincy, seconded by Jerry, all favor. It's unanimous, thank you Lisa.
Great.
Thank you, everybody. Okay.
I just gotta do something else.
One more.
Oh, yeah, GDC with Lisa.
So I just want to give you a quick uh update on a specific guaranteed and viable curriculum. And I'm going to just speak to our new um English language arts curriculum. Overall, I think I've heard lots of positive comments from administrators, from teachers and from parents. Um, as well as kids. They're very engaged in that knowledge portion. Uh, the other day I went down to second grade and there they were learning about Sparta. And they were di- they were dressing their turkeys, you know, because Thanksgiving and they're disguising their turkeys. And um one student was so excited to share with me, he disguised his turkey as Sparta. And then he had this great explanation as why he did it, I just. So the connections they're making and how they're using that is just um exciting to see. Uh, but I had um administrators and teachers share that at conference time, they had a lot of positive feedback from that. Uh, as part of our ELA adoption, we had a number of collective commitments. And among those collective commitments was that administrators would do weekly fidelity checks. We want, we waited to start those until after um MEA days in October. Because we needed teachers to kind of get their feet underneath them and feel a little comfortable. Uh, but this week, we're just starting our fourth week of fidelity checks. Um, what I did was I divided the staff equally among the principal, the assistant principal and me. And we have a little half a sheet of. A fidelity check form and uh we, at some point during their ELA time. Uh, we go and we spend a little bit of time seeing what they're doing and which um program materials they're doing. We check those off and we read a few comments and we leave it um for the teacher, it is not. By any means, any sort of an evaluate evaluative or judgmental time period, it's purely. Uh, just to see what what's going on with the program. Um, it's been really fun for me to see. Starting at kindergarten and I I started kindergarten and I go all the way to sixth grade and sixth grade in a day. It's interesting to see the progression that happens. Um, it's also neat to see the engagement of the students and what they're doing. Uh, and the knowledge portion, what they're learning is um. I think in fourth grade last week, they were learning about King Edward, I had no idea. I was trying to help them with an assignment and I was like, I need to read. Backup, uh stop and and um I had to sit down with them and actually read um before I could help them. But it's a great, I think it's been a positive um move for us overall. Very, very um heavy on the structured literacy at the K two level. Uh, and that's evident when you, when you walk in and see what they're doing there. Um, they have the, it it was neat, I noticed in first grade the other day, they have uh. Three students come up with the word C A P and they go, okay, what's that word? And the kids sound out each letter and then they put it all together and makes cap and then they say shazam. And Magic E walks up and they say, now what does this make? It makes the word cape and that, so that's, that was really neat to see and they, they did lots and lots of practice with that. Um, so overall, I think it's good. The older grades, uh there's a little bit of a struggle because this is not a traditional program, so they do not have traditional spelling lists. And and that's something they're struggling with a little bit. And the rigor of writing is much, much heavier than what they're used to. And the kids in those older grades just don't have the stamina and the grit and perseverance to really. Um, stick with it, so there's, those older teachers, those older grades are struggling with that a little bit. I said to them, keep a running list of comments and concerns. Because I'll bring that ELA committee together and we want to talk through those. And see what we can do to alleviate some of those issues for next year. And and I reminded them, this is a new program and we don't expect them to be perfect. And it was interesting because I had a teacher say, thank you, please keep telling us that.
As as you recall, and so as we've discussed that it was going to be a rocky road to begin with, because this is taking. The kids up another level and while this will be a rough couple of years. These kids will come along, we've been in the program, but then all of a sudden it'll be like, this will be what they're used to, it'll be easy. But when you jump in in the middle, it, everybody's gonna be paying.
Yeah.
The kids and the teachers, because it's hard to jump into.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sounds like normal growing pains.
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
And they just, just keep on keeping on, tell them we understand, it's hard, but they can do it.
I, I, thank you Jerry, and I I have said that to him and I will continue to remind them. And I say, you don't, you don't have to have all the pieces in place right now, just do the best you can and get. Have to go through the program to really understand the program as much as we. And we did, we labored over it as much as we possibly could, I think when we adopted it. What was it going to be like, what were we in for, what do we need to know? But until you actually teach it day in and day out, you 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 just don't.
So true, because I remember what we talked about was being worried about the little kids.
Yeah.
It sounds like they're doing great. You just don't know till you jump in and try swimming and then, yeah, they'll figure it out, so. Uh, cheers to everybody for giving it a try.
My older kids, do you mean, because it goes up to six?
It does go to six.
Is it like the fifth, sixth?
Yeah, I would say uh third isn't too bad, fourth, it's hitting pretty hard, fifth, it's really hitting pretty hard. Um, sixth grade today, I I had a teacher that said, you know, the the first session. The first unit that they taught was all about the author Roald Dahl. Who wrote Willie Walkin' the Chocolate Factory or Matilda or James and the Giant Peach. And great stories, but there's um lots of unkind characters. And so she said, you know, we're, here I am in my class trying to teach. How to be kind to one another and all we're reading about is, you know, this terrible teacher or this terrible. Student or, and she's, you know, they're comparing that and so she was a little concerned.
Well, but that's, that's part of the villain of any story, I mean, there's always a villain.
Yeah.
And we can discuss that as.
Yeah.
Be literary advice.
Definitely.
You're cool, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve.
Yeah, I just want to share a little brief update with for and as many of you know, we spend uh team together in our K twelve. Connect graduate profile update meeting recently with stakeholders, we have parents. Community members, um we have students there, one Jake who's leaving. Um, and um so we had some really good feedback during the meeting, but also over five hundred responses that helped. You know, give us a good feedback regarding our competencies. And then when we met uh Mr. Brown and I helped facilitate that discussion, we felt like we had some really good conversations there and. Engaged in the discussion about different competencies. And ultimately, I just have a brief summary of some of the competencies that we selected. Um, and some of the sub bowl of competence selected, so you'll see that we did identify six that. It was pretty clear actually, when looking at the points and reflecting on it, try to look back at it again and make sure it counted every single one at one. And that we didn't lose any dots. Overall, really good stuff and we did have. Uh, you can see adaptable and resilient connected there and critical thinking thinker and problem solver. Uh, ethical knowledge of academic content was kind of some feedback we would shift that from master academic content. That language there, so this reflects some of the discussion and the feedback in our meeting as well as the overall survey results. So good stuff overall and um. Um, this is just a summary of those words, those competencies. Our goal next is to meet on December third and have three different examples. With images that reflect school district and these competencies, the graduate profile. With definitions, mostly one sentence, so it's very brief definitions of each of these included. So we will come to that meeting, the goal is to come to that meeting, these three different examples and hopefully from that meeting choose. That we like, that represents Whitefish and these competencies and this graduate profile. Then we would bring that to the board um later in January for our recommendation. That's the hope.
Well streamlined process you've done.
Well, I think what's been helpful is we do get a lot of feedback. You know, to to narrow it down through a survey, um and then and then coming into that meeting, I thought we had some good discussion and feedback. But I think the next phase is then looking at artistic representations. Like if we do that, um that's where I think you can, it could take a while, but I think it maybe if we have three different examples. That select one that really truly represents us and hopefully um find something that represents the whole concept.
And who, who did you? Did you contact somebody to make representations or some district or?
Uh, Hatton Lynn.
Oh.
So there's a consultant, a consultant who will help us design those concepts. The great things is they have experience doing this and have experience with some designs that already that could help represent some of this for us. Um, just for instance, we have a, a mountain on our own design, you know, our bathroom, and it can be the the backdrop. So uh we're excited about that.
It was interesting, um when you included in that K twelve connect the packet of all the different examples. There's so many different, um different like ways to go with it, so this, this is great, thank you for narrowing it down. Because it feels like hope a lot, it could be like. This could take forever.
I will uh um, yeah, I think I, Darcy doesn't care, so I hope I invite her and. Uh, I think Mr. Brown has been involved in some of that, get a little feedback on those first three designs and then bring them up to.
Baby dance and steam, those we sure.
Uh, we know one thing, it will be colorful.
To tell you the, the timeline, we won't really have much time, uh the timeline from Hatton Lynn will be directly posted, so really, um. We'll get some ideas from them and.
Turn right around. That's cool, what a great partnership you guys have developed.
Yeah.
Very cool. Anything else on that one?
I just, I had to leave that K twelve connect early, so it's, I was kind of like, oh, I wonder what they decide. So now I see these are the top ones, which is fun, it was quite impressive. I bet, it was hard to look at that big list for the survey and like see what overlapped with the community and staff and all the things, so.
You know, I think, I just wanted to touch on this, I'm really excited about this because it represents what we generally conceive for our students. Right, that makes sense, but it really makes sense then when you look at. Some of um. The divisions we may have in our country. The differences amongst people and things like that, I think I wonder, isn't it nice that we can agree on? Some competencies that we feel are really important, we value as a community. I think that's really something really special about, so I, we'll be looking forward.
And an opportunity for everybody to.
Yeah.
Good job. Okay, moving on to a perennial item, which is our Whitefish City Dark recreation. And like the school district joint use facilities agreement. Every year, right?
Yeah, exactly, um so this, I'll briefly just touch on this, this agreement is not. It's very similar to those ones in the past, we did make one adjustment and just making sure that date. To get into the tennis courts is identified in there, and we had some discussion about. When the snow would be removed and things like that, so we really had some, a good thought of that. We also, what's different about this one is we did attach an abandoned, that's the next document in there. Um, that identifies some potential dates for everything, which is something we haven't done before. So this will help guide us as we. It still allows us to make adjustments at any point based on the needs of school or the city, the needs for the city to use a site or whatever, but. It gives us some guidance as well.
Yeah, also it's great to have everything on the same page, yeah, and have those conversations approached, so thank you. Any clarifying questions for Dave? Any public comment on this one? Seeing none, back to the board for for the discussion or motion?
The move that we uh.
The move that we uh accept, these as presented, I would appreciate if they would be combined into one document.
Can I make a?
Yeah.
And just to make a comment, I actually recommended they were separate. And here's, I can just give you a rationale why. That is, it is. Draft almost, it's it's not contract, we're not signing an agreement to those dates. It's it's almost like it's a um. List of potential dates. Therefore, I suggested that be a separate document attached to it.
So in essence, these are subject change.
For sure.
So that's why we don't want it to be installed.
But. In real, in reality, it is like one document, we we could include it there if that's the purpose of the world.
And is it referred to in? In the first.
Yes, it is. It should be.
If it's not, then the entire agreement part.
Same, um I will see it in the.
The candy.
I could put in a statement, this is.
Under the shared facilities list, maybe.
Please reference the attached.
Otherwise, it's like.
Or you could even say this agreement and the addendum constitutes the entire understanding tool.
That works.
That's my concern that it gets separated.
It's at least referred to.
And this part, and the first, the initial contract does say that we can amend it later, so. If you just add the way this agreement and the amendment.
Where is that?
In the I Y X.
Yeah, this agreement and the amendment.
You, sounds good, I will.
But that's this.
Okay, so Shannon's motions that we approve this with. Item I X amended.
Yeah, hold on one second, I I didn't, I didn't quite.
The amendment says this agreement may not be modified.
Oh, that's okay, yes.
Or maybe two.
You were talking about.
Yeah, I I want to put it in I X.
Does your add the addendum?
And the addendum constitutes the entire understanding.
But but the only question I have then, can you say this agreement may not be modified?
Yes.
If in fact we had to modify the dates.
Because we're not referring referring to the agreement, or we're only referring to the agreement. That's my.
So will you say it exactly how you want us to see?
Yeah, so uh uh under entire agreement, I want, I would propose that we add this agreement and the addendum, or addendum A. Refers to constitutes the entire understanding between the parties, et cetera. The concern, I believe, of my colleague is that we're below that under X, says this agreement may not be modified. I believe we're okay because that says this agreement.
That's a staple.
Thanks, there a second?
I'll say.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, move by Shannon, seconded by Jerry, all favor. Okay, moving on to our annual review of our emergency operation plan with superintendent means.
Okay, so this is another thing that's just an annual um. Process to include our emergency operation. I see some typos here, just quickly, the Z Z on that first word, we'll fix that, you know, the first page, I don't know how that. Uh so we'll remove that. But uh the rest of the document, the really, the only changes here are changing the names of who's signing the document. Other than that, this is the same document. Includes all the same stakeholders in sign. This document covers our incident command structure, structure, our roles and responsibilities. In emergencies and assignment of responsibilities, et cetera. It also includes links to specific plans, but those links are links to detailed plans that we wouldn't. Very quick response to. Uh like that, but they're not available. To public, if they may detail specific information that we need to have. So in this plan uh is our general emergency operations plan. Um covers. What is required of the special operation plan. Is required to be reviewed. We have done through our quick response team, stakeholders were a part of that committee. Our goal is then to, if this is approved, this evening, have it signed by a whole state.
Receive my consent. This is the appropriate. Just to clarify, you said that this, we approve this, obviously, this is a public document, so. There's a separate document, it's not a public.
There's a few links. I'll give you the example, it's.
I said this link, I see that.
Yeah, this link, the. Evacuation routes, um those are not public, uh they identify specific routes in certain situations that.
Okay, we don't, so that folder would not appear if I was not in this.
Cool, any other clarifying questions about this one?
I was just, um I didn't know if it would be included in here, or if it's just moved, uh. The um some of that evolution that you guys have made. With my carrying Milwaukee's now and stuff like that, like is that type of thing clarified in here, or is that just something? Just happening outside of this plan, yeah.
It's a good.
And also the app thing or whatever, yeah, yeah, like we've made updates, I was just curious if those are referenced as part of our.
Not in this plan specifically, that's a good question, um this I think is more about roles response.
That's what it seems like.
Yeah.
But then I didn't know if it'd be like superintendent. Where's walking so and so, you know what I mean? If that isn't expected. I just, I'm not saying it needs to be, I just. Didn't know how that, because it's a total, like who, yeah, right, yeah, like exactly, how is that connected?
Yeah, we have a very detailed. Older that contains all. Quick response team.
So the team has it on your own, perfect, that's what I was just curious. Yeah.
Yeah, I would say this is more.
Okay.
It's our overall operations.
Not only that, I would argue that. Publishing was carrying Milwaukee land is not really something we want to.
Right, it would be along with some of that. I was just curious if it was part of like acknowledging that it exists, they exist, or like the app, you know what I mean, like.
Yes.
Because at the same point, you're supposed to reference it for.
Yeah.
Like. Yeah. If you're a parent, you know, whatever, like you're like, oh, whatever are safety features besides? So anyways, thank you for.
Any other clarifying questions? Any public comment on this one? Bachelor board for motion?
I will accept emergency operation plan for twenty four twenty five.
That's ready. Right, move by Randy, seconded by Nancy, all favor. It passes.
Thank you.
Hearing on.
Excellent. So the next one is just a real brief update, I just wanted to make sure we touch on the expansion. Um where we are in that process each time we come together, because we will be talking about that for some time. So tonight, I just wanted to share that we're in that process of our interviews for the architect. Owners rep, we will have a recommendation to the board for our December tenth meeting. Ultimately, we'll bring our recommendation to the board for those areas, um once that is determined. Work with those groups and um finalize agreements with them, and then we would then move forward. To looking at the general contractor after that, or likely that would have occurred in January or February. Selected. We will include in owners rep and architect.
I just wanted to thank the committee members for all the work on the interviews and soliciting the. Proposals, and that's a lot of work and a lot of time, and it's hard work, so.
Several dog and pony show. The last few days.
Lots to wrap your head around, too, and it's a really important decision, so thank you guys for.
It's been, you know, as a committee member, it's been um. Fulfilling is a way to see how. Quickly, we really, when it comes down to it, we come to consensus on on these things, but. You know, and and that, you know, there've been no fisticuffs and no arguing. So, which is, which is always good, but. Have brought up that it made me, you know, change sort of my ordering and my. I my thought process, it's it's been very, very collaborative and very good, very good project. It was, you know, I would say grueling, because it wasn't really a lot of work, but I mean, it was a lot of. It was a lot of time and.
Yes. And it's a big decision. Yeah. Yeah.
It was less grueling than running a lunch. Now we're glad.
Glad that we're not talking about that again.
I think the. Preparation process was certainly grueling for the candidates.
I think, I think, yeah, they 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 all took it seriously.
Yes.
They, you know, they brought their A game and they, you know, they um. I think, you know. The architect decision was maybe a little harder, they were. A little. They were very quality, you know, there there was nobody that came into this that. That we know that couldn't have done the job, which is very good, so it was nice to get the good quality, you know. And I think we're going to get a good quality product.
I think we're really fortunate for that, and I also think that's a reflection of. You guys in our district and being, having a good reputation for being good to work with, so thank you.
It had a lot to do with, you know, a well-prepared R R Q. And uh we don't well, you know.
Thank you.
We can, we still, a good chunk of the time that we spent crafting question. And I think that process is actually closer to fisticuffs than any. We had to agree on, and it ended up being fourteen questions for each, you know, each group and. Yeah.
It's kind of like writing a graduate profile.
No, we didn't do any of that. But it was, it's it's, you know, I'm always a process guy, and this, I just. Very, very well done, and and you know, I think there's nobody that could look back on it and say that.
Wasn't thorough.
That it wasn't thorough, and that we didn't arrive at, you know, good. A good outcome.
Good, thank you guys. Okay, we'll look forward to December. And moving forward on that, thank you. Okay, moving on to our resolution operating issuance of bond.
Thank you, Kate. Now, this is the most exciting issue I have. And to make it, to pass it up even more, uh we have invited uh Bridget Exstrom from D A Davidson. D A Davidson uh where is or will be our uh bond uh issuance council. And uh Ms. Exstrom is very experienced. In public financing, especially public bond issuers. Uh so let me welcome Bridget Exstrom from D A Davidson, and she will give us some. Uh basic overview of the bond issuance process. And uh she will provide uh information about the current bond market. And she will also show us a preliminary calendar, a preliminary financing calendar. So welcome, Bridget.
Thank you, Lucy, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Okay, well, fantastic, uh big congratulations to you all, um sorry, I'm not there in person tonight, we'll have lots of. Meetings uh where I will be there in person, a a lot of work to do, but we've accomplished a lot already. Uh just in the time that uh since the bond issue passed, so huge congratulations. I think statewide, the count is something like maybe six bonds have passed out of twenty five or so in the past year and a half, so. You are in um, you know, the very top of the the list in Montana of schools that can accomplish what you did and. And great job uh regrouping from when uh when it failed just by a few hundred votes in two thousand twenty three, great job this. This time uh getting voters to pass the election. Uh we uh are underway with like the sixty day window. Where voters have to contest the election, and that's actually up November sixteenth, have you, have you heard from anyone that's wanted to? Contest the election?
No, no.
Great.
And we've had a few, you know, just with voter sentiment, what it is, we had one that took a while in Glendive and. And we've had a few uh throughout the years, but this uh, we're we're right up against that that date, so I assume we're we're in the clear. So we always wait that that sixty day window before we move ahead, but but Lucy and I, we've been working on a lot of documents and and superintendent means getting. Getting information together, and so we're ready to go, um the it's it's really exciting for me to to work with Whitefish Schools, I'm going to date myself. And since I'm not there in person, you can't see all the gray hair, but I was um started with your central school addition in two thousand three. On on that financing, which was a little under ten million, um if you can believe that, back in two thousand three for your your two-story addition. And some of the remodel work, and then um in two thousand twelve, worked on the fourteen million dollar uh high school. Addition and remodel, and then in two thousand seventeen, worked on the twenty six point five million dollar mold down, uh new elementary. And and other renovation work, um and on that issue, I believe just two board members were part of that process. Um I think Katie and Shannon were here in two thousand seventeen when we did, when we did that process, so. Um so stop me with any questions as we kind of talk about some of the early concepts, but essentially, I just wanted to. Before you adopt the resolution tonight, um the resolution basically just uh acknowledges that the bonds have passed. And that the district's moving ahead with the issuance of the bonds, and uh the main thing on the time schedule. Is that uh you know, we're waiting for the November sixteenth date, so if you're looking at that document, it's the the um yellow highlighted number. Or uh yellow highlighted information, but we're waiting for the November sixteenth date to pass. And then we're also waiting uh to go through the architect and owners rep selection process, so that we can have some discussions with the architect. And owners rep and just walk through uh construction timelines, uh you know, comfortable, uh you know. If they're comfortable with a budget, uh and and that way we can kind of put the the financing time schedule exactly that matches. One of our first decisions is to think about whether or not we want to issue the bonds all at once. Um a- and there's some pros to doing that, we know what the bond premium is, which we think will come in around two point seven. Million or so based on current numbers, and you can start to earn investment earnings, which will also be able to go toward the project. So currently, the rate um on on investment earnings is around three and a half percent. If you had, you know, three and a half percent, and you invested all thirty two point six million for one year, you would have a little over one point one million. To add to the project, so what we're trying to do um with these considerations is maximize the amount of money you have for the project. But also obviously minimize the interest costs on the bond, so um when we go to sell the bonds, we'll break them up into five thousand dollar increments. They'll be sold as a tax exempt investment, and those rates are 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 low. Uh compared to other rates you see in the market for like prime rates or mortgage rates, those rates are closer to um, you know, four percent currently. So we're going to have um, you know, likely uh good, good results on locking into low interest rates. And then also, we're still going to be able to earn nice investment earnings on the proceeds of the bonds while the project's being built. So one of, so so kind of backtracking, one of the questions would be, do we want to issue the bonds all at once? Or do we want to split the issuance up into two series? So back in two thousand seventeen, when we did the mold down bonds, we issued those all at once. Um and then, but back in uh two thousand twelve, when we did the high school remodel, we actually decided to issue those over. Over two series, so there's pros and cons, and that's something we'll kind of begin to to explore and put together some pros and cons lists as we move ahead. Once we have a chance to meet with the architect, one of the IRS provisions that because we are getting these tax exempt rates is that we want to. is that we want to be able to certify at closing of the bonds that we can expend eighty-five percent of bond proceeds within uh, three years. So, uh, that eighty-five percent would be, you know, twenty-seven million within three years. So, we'd be looking at, you know, it closing the bonds in early two thousand twenty-five, so all the way to twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So, we'd want to be able to be an eighty-five percent expenditure in in early twenty-eight, which we will likely achieve. But we just want to walk through those conversations. So, the the resolution you adopt tonight will form a bond finance committee that would work in between board meetings to become a little more familiar with some of the decisions. Um, and then and then we'll report back at the board meeting. So, the bond finance committee um, as the resolution um, is written tonight, would be typically, it's the the board chair, the superintendent, the business manager, and then one lucky board member. Um, and uh, and I'm sure uh, Katie and Shannon, since they've heard all of this before, are gonna jump at the chance to to do it um, uh, like we did in two thousand twenty uh, or two thousand seventeen on the last project. But uh, it is a lot of fun. We we work through uh, the rating agency process where we're meeting with Standard and Poor's Rating Agency to uh, renew or maybe even upgrade the the district's rating from A-plus currently. Um, and then that that's one of the processes. And then we're also just again finalizing the disclosure documents. And then, once we're ready to sell the bonds, we'll we'll put notices out uh, to the local community. It'll go out in the Whitefish Pilot, um, the Daily Interleg, other publications that notify people there's an opportunity to buy a tax-exempt bond in those five-thousand-dollar increments. And again, if we sold them all, there'd be a little over six-thousand um, bonds to sell. So, people locally will have an opportunity. Uh, you you can mail out information to to your constituents so that everybody is aware that there's the bond purchase opportunity. So, um, so that's uh, the process, the the time schedule as you are looking at it tonight just allows for us to move forward, you know, fairly quickly after we meet with the architect in in and uh, and owners rep in mid-December. We would look to get the bond rating in January. We'd offer the bonds late January, early February and uh, close the bond issue in mid- mid-February. So, you'd have bond proceeds to start paying the the cost of the of the project. And then, as I mentioned, we'll know what the, you know, some of the parameters are, like what the additional bond premium may be to apply to the project and 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 we'll start investment earnings too. So, um, a lot of work to do, but it'll be um, fun. And we think that, you know, the bond market's favorable right now for moving ahead. That's part of the packet too. Um, is is just looking at where interest rates have been. And um, and we do think we'll be pretty close to that kind of four percent range uh, currently. And then um, you know, just being mindful of what we projected to voters. We had projected for both uh, the academic and athletic portions, it would be about thirteen-point-seven-three mils. And we're we're currently looking at around thirteen-point-three mils. Um, and and then again, having all the other advantages we talked about. So, um, I talked fast. So, does any anyone have any questions about the the quick overview?
Bridget, I don't have a question, but maybe a request. Could you please explain uh, in simple terms for those of us who don't know what bond premium is? Would you tell the team what bond premium means?
Yeah.
Why it is advantageous uh, uh, or why we're in an advantageous bond market currently?
Yep. Yeah, and and one of the things is that Montana bonds are in high demand. Uh, people in our state, there's not a lot of tax-advantaged investments um, in the bond market. And people in our state uh, will, you know, will, it'll be a highly um, desired um, investment, especially when we're in the A-plus kind of credit range. And because of your good uh, credit rating, because of the demand on the bonds, but also because of kind of national trends, we think the yield on your uh, bond issue will be driven below kind of kind of the normal coupon rate that's at that's offered on bonds. So, typically, we see what's called a five-percent coupon rate on bonds. And that's kind of part of the decision and 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 um, you know, pricing information we'll look at along the way. We'll pull, you know, every bond that's similar to yours across the nation that's gonna be offered in the next couple of months and cut follow what those trends are and we'll look at that on spreadsheets. But because of your credit rating, because of the location, you know, where you are in Flathead County and in particular in Whitefish, because of the demand that we think we'll see from banks, insurance companies, uh, individual investors, that'll drive down the yield of your bond, which increases the price. So, people people are willing to weigh, pay a higher price for your bond issue. That price then goes to the district uh, the and then you get to decide as a board what to do with it um, in conjunction with all the project professionals that you're currently hiring. Um, that money goes into your building fund at closing. And then um, at the end of the project, as you go through, uh, to the extent you have money left over, you uh, can pay off, you know, some debt service, um, uh, lower the levies. Or um, often in today's market, and especially because I know you were very mindful of the um, the project budget that but it seems like um, many schools end up picking up some alternates um, that maybe were um, you know, the, you know, listed as an alternate instead of the main part of the project. So, so there'll be a lot of decisions um, to make regarding what to do with the bond premium and with the um, the uh, uh, interest earnings on the bond proceeds while you complete the project. So, you'll have two uh, two budgets that you're working with. One is the debt service fund. And so, that's what you'll levy every year for the next twenty years to pay off the bonds. But the immediate project budget you're gonna be working on is is the money put into your building fund. And that'll be there for the next three years or so while you complete the projects. That's the money that you'll earn investment earnings on and that's where your bond premium will go. So, so that'll be part of uh, kind of this education process that we work together on in the next couple of months.
Thank you, Bridget.
And and exciting times. It really is. Um, I I think uh, we saw the Fed lower rates uh, last in September by a half a percent. And then last week, the Fed lowered rates by a quarter of a percent. So, we're seeing um, you know, favorable markets for um, for rates. Um, now that we have the election behind us last week, we'll see what the mar, how the markets do. Um, they've been fairly stable um, overall. Um, we'll see uh, as far as the the bond market goes. Um, we have our next Fed meeting uh, in mid-December and then another one at the end of January before we lock rates. And we can always slow down the process, the the elect or the um, uh, the bond process that you're looking at tonight is just if we move along, you know, at a fairly uh, rapid pace as soon as we meet with the architect in December.
Uh, Bridget, could you evoke us through page five of the attachment? Uh, that is the amortization schedule. And would you explain the difference between the numbers above and below the blue line?
Yep. So, um, is that that one, two, three, four, five? That's the um, at the very top, it says tax levy, two percent growth.
Yes, yes, by amortization schedule. Yeah.
Um, so, on that page, what you're looking at is uh, the fact that you still have some two thousand twelve bonds outstanding. That's in the first column. So, we'll have seven years of overlap with that two thousand twelve issue. Um, the two thousand thirteen issue um, was paid already. Um, that's in the next column. Uh, and then we have the new bond. Um, and I've broken it down into, we're we're not, we're likely gonna combine this. But because we talked to taxpayers about the academic portion and the athletic portion, I still kept them into column A and B. That's what's what's kind of blocked off. Um, and then you're, there's a line across there that shows where, you know, we'll start those levies next year on on your tax rolls next year. And then you'll notice um, that the the first column, the two thousand twenty-five A bond has debt service of about one-point-six million for seven years. And then it goes up to two-point-five million. So, part of the original financing plan that we all talked about when we were originally even looking at the two thousand twenty-three bond that didn't pass is to um, recognize that we have seven years left of payments on that um, high school new addition back from two thousand twelve. And so, we were going to what we call wrap the bond issue, wrap the new payments around those seven years so that taxpayers aren't, you know, really having this higher impact for the next seven years. And then the impact goes down. Instead, we will keep the payments a little lower for the seven years of overlap. And then um, the payments on the new bonds will go up at the same amount as the payments on the old bonds, the prior bonds will go down. So, essentially, when you look at that total debt service column, payments are right around three million for the next twenty years. So, it makes it just a nice level levy in that debt service fund. And then what we're loo doing in the next column is we're looking at your um, your taxable value uh, changing. And we just chose a a simple, you know, for math purposes, just to show what happens with two-percent growth rate in your tax base with new new construction and so on. So, as your tax base grows, the mills go down. So, um, you can see on this schedule, we just went back a few years. We went back to two thousand nineteen. You were levying about fifteen mils then, and then it went down to fourteen, eleven, ten, nine, five, five. And now it'll go up to thirteen. That's a plus thirteen mils. And and we were projecting a little, little more than that to to taxpayers. But that, some of that was the revaluation, as you as you're aware. Other other parts of it is all the new construction that we see in Whitefish and the gro, just that, you know, the amazing growth that you have in your district. So, as we have new construction, everyone's share of the pie will go down. So, over time, if you go to the very bottom of that district mill levy column, you're back down to, you know, just levying thirteen mils. Um, and and so, the monthly impact per hundred thousand, you know, is gonna be, you know, a little with two dollars and fifteen cents for all of your debt service uh, next year when we add this bond on. And then by the time, if we just have only two percent growth in the district, you know, it's down to one dollar and forty-eight cents a month uh, per hundred thousand. So, it's, so this just kind of is a nice um, a a nice visual of how debt service will be paid and kind of the impacts of what happens with what taxable value changes.
Question. Um, this is Shannon.
Hi, Shannon.
The, you said you've projected for for purposes of this two percent uh, growth in in our taxable value. That doesn't seem to bear any bearing on reality of it. My suspicion is that it's much higher than that based on
Oh, yeah.
History, okay. And that will just decrease the mills, correct?
Absolutely, a hundred percent. Yeah, it's uh, it's amazing, as you know, what's happened in in your district and and new construction. So, when when we see revaluation growth and people's prop, you know, someone's property that they put no, you know, no improvements into, and their property went from five-hundred thousand on the tax rolls to seven-hundred thousand. And that's a tough subject for a lot of people, which is why why bond issues haven't passed. What you have in addition to that is all the new construction. So, those, that new construction offsets the impacts for sure. And so, over time, um, you're you're really gonna see the impacts go down to people. And it's not because of just inflation, it's because you have all the new construction coming on. So, um, in general, you know, the last two um, times where we had a um, a revaluation um, in the district, you know, property jumped up sixteen percent and sixty-two percent. But the two years where it was just a new construction coming on, the values jumped by four percent and three percent. So, so you're seeing, you know, maybe double that rate um, with new constr, just just new construction alone.
Thank you.
Yeah, good. That's a good question.
Thank you. And thank you for proposing this level approach to reducing that. I think it's great.
Really smart and really
Yes.
Also, your packet, it's really helpful. Thank you, Bridget.
Yes. Oh, good.
And also, so helpful that you explained it all because
So, yeah, so to tonight, you would just adopt this resolution. We, um, I think the next agenda item is who, you know, who would be the lucky board member to join the the business manager, the superintendent and the board chair. Um, it, oh, back to that first page, as you look ahead to that agenda item. Um, I did highlight in green um, just the the dates that, you know, where we'd have kind of a the potential committee meeting. And all this is just for sample purposes. We'll get together as a group and and decide uh, better the dates and times and all of that. But there's really only just a, you know, maybe a total of four meetings for the committee or five, counting the meeting with the architect and so on. So, maybe five meetings in total that all are about an hour or so, maybe some materials go out in advance. But so, it's not a huge time commitment for for people thinking about whether or not they might be that extra board member.
Okay, oh, good. Okay, let's take them one at a time. So, first related to the resolution. Is there any public comment about that? For the discussion from the board about that. Motion?
I know the resolution is presented.
Okay, great. Move back and seconded by Jerry, all favor. Okay, that's unanimous. And now, the next exciting one is who would like to be on the committee?
And nobody's making an item like this, suddenly, why? Well, I think Katie and and Throckmorton have had the most experience.
Oh, I'm gonna decline, but if Shannon would like to. Okay, great.
Okay. Thank you. Have had so much experience. So, let me just summarize. I didn't mean to cut you off.
I'm sorry, just, yeah, I think Bridget mentioned the the recommended members typically are the business director.
And the board.
Superintendent Chair and one other.
And one hundred. So, you have to, okay, okay.
Okay, well, before we have a motion, is there any public comment on this? What would the public like to be asked?
They're not here.
Don't we need a staff member or two?
How about principal?
Back to the board for further discussion or motion. And in your motion, speaking to people.
I move that we create our bond in finance committee with um, Lucy Shea, Superintendent Dave Means, um, Darcy Schillinger, the board chair. Shannon Hansen.
Move by Jerry, seconded by Ray, all in favor.
One thing for this bond, there's no condition under which this bond would go past board reorganization, is there?
No.
Okay. I didn't want to put a name to the chair.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, now we can.
We voted. It passed. Unanimously. Congratulations to the new committee members. Actually, super fascinating.
Confusing, but fascinating.
Okay, moving forward to our superintendent evaluation tool. I think you all had a chance to look at that. Shannon, Darcy and I met to talk about it and take all the feedback. Um, thank you, Rainy, for getting notes to it, to the committee. Super, super helpful. And also really good discussion that we had before the committee met again to talk about it. So, the new tool is in everybody's work materials.
Thank you for formatting.
Thanks for the page numbers. The notes were very helpful. Are there any questions about it? Fair point, questions?
I just go back to uh, I mean, no, it's a discussion.
Any public comment on this one? No? Back to the board for further discussion?
I mean, it's it's great. It's, thank you guys very much. I know this is always hard and we're always evolving and that's important, I think, because we should be growing. So, thank you guys for all that. I just would say, what I've mentioned for is, I just struggle with referencing a K-12 connect as part of a superintendent eval. Like, I just don't ever see those as like an opportunity, except of course, superintendent is there, of course, the leading. So, maybe it's in that context. Um, but as far as using that as like a pinpoint into answering the questions below, I don't get information at a K-12 connect that's gonna help me fill out the eval with the format. Does that make sense?
Uh-huh.
You were in at the meeting, I guess, and I had brought that. It it's it's not a big deal. It's fine that it's listed there. But I guess I'm just, I've always just been, kind of how I asked the same question about like, why is school, yeah, like it just, yeah, and it's fine. It's just um,
Kind of nebulous and squishy.
Yeah, I just am not sure, like if I was a new board member, that, okay. Yeah, I just am not sure, like if I was a new board member, that, okay, my K twelve connect, and this is gonna really help me figure out. Like, no, that's, because K twelve connects are so topic specific, you know, and anyways, that's just my opinion on including that, but.
K twelve connect, it's not necessarily a uniform. Has this been before?
Yes, and the reason is because it's, it's not a uniform group, but it is a uniform process with different stakeholders from different groups. So an opportunity to hear from different groups. Also, I think it could be used as evidence, like, look what the superintendent's doing to engage
Right.
Different people, so it could be used as evidence, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah. I'm fine to leave it. I just wanted to bring it up and maybe the back to our heads, we can be thinking about it as we're filling it out. That's all. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight it as a discussion item. I'm fine with how it is, I came to agree.
Okay.
That's that's not worth it for that.
Just something.
Just something to think about, and if anyone can educate me, like you said, just give me examples of how to use the K twelve connect um to fulfill this, then that's great. Just pray, educate me, yeah. But I see your point on that, yeah.
Um I believe that is one of our main mechanisms of feedback. And community engagement. So it's an opportunity stakeholders, like regarding admissions, programs, things that we're doing. Maybe it's a new idea, but it's something where we're getting, we're getting input. And that might be in the form of questions or what I want people to wonder about. So it's feedback regarding our overall uh initiatives related to it. So in that way, I think it's feedback.
Agreed. I mean, I think they're valuable tools. I just don't know how it impacts this superintendent eval.
Well, it does, because you will hear at those, if there's that.
Wrong, right.
It has been, my experience, it is the one place where we actually get community members to come into this.
I'll say historically, yes, it's going really well, yes, but when things aren't going really well, you see that.
And that's what I'm like, I just don't have the historical perspective to understand what it look like besides, yeah.
It becomes really evident like.
But I I also think that
That's great.
It shows the leadership of how they're organized, you know, how the committees are organized, the whole process. That's all part of leadership of how the superintendent leads.
Right, executes their job.
Execu- yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other thoughts or adjustments anybody'd like to put out there? Should we do it? You'll notice that some of the things on it, we're not gonna start until twenty twenty-five, too, we're like, how can we possibly be like, do this by next week? So hopefully it feels fair. There are motion on this one?
Make a motion that we approve this as presented.
Awesome. Move by Shannon, seconded by Jerry, all favor. Awesome. Keep going on now. Um this was exciting, a donation for the choir. With our business director, Lucy Shea.
Um we received a donation in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and six thousand twenty-six Buddha High School Choir. Uh this was done through fundraising online through ninety-nine-one pledges dot com. And the money is earmarked for. New York was last.
Oh, okay, that was the thing.
Okay. Maybe it was in April of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Uh this is um what's his name, Sky Thorson. Thank you, Sky Thorson's class.
Well, now why are music programs are so popular?
All the dogs are. Join music and see the world.
Any clarifying questions for Lucy about this one? Any public comment about this one? Flash the board for further discussion or motion.
I move your good donation as presented.
It passes. Thank you to all those ninety-one.
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine donors. Okay, another gift, that's Lucy Shea for our.
Presented for your consideration is uh our annual agreement with the Whitefish Baseball. Whitefish um Whitefish High School Ba- Ha- High School Baseball uh Inc. Uh it's an agreement that we have every year. Uh baseball, as you know, is school sponsored. Um but not school-funded support. Thanks to the Whitefish High School Baseball, uh we are able to um receive um twenty-five thousand dollars a year and um support this program.
Sorry, and where does that come from?
It is uh Whitefish High School Baseball Incorporated is a separate entity.
They raise money through some means and give it to the school.
Okay, so it's like is that students or?
No, probably only the members.
Participate in the baseball, the baseball team.
Is that that softball? That's a separate space. This is baseball, okay. Well, we have as uh the same agreement for softball. Um and swimming, but it's not presented uh.
It's amazing.
Very strange.
Yeah.
Because we can't accept money except via board decision.
Right. But it's confusing if you didn't understand that. It's confusing if you don't understand that we are sponsoring this sport, we do not fund this sport, yes, yeah.
So when, just because we're on charitable donations, when new tools were requested? So that gets sent back to them.
Whenever there's a request that's been shared with us, well, with me, with administration, encourage that first to support those things, whether or not there's a budget in order to fund certain equipment items for new programs.
So like we go to the high school or the middle school, depending on the money, whatever, or the.
Correct, and that's the the process that we should follow and then look at our budgets and see whether it's funding to support any of those requests. If it's beyond what our budget can provide, uh then it would likely come to excel or the Whitefish Education Foundation, something like that, we'll explore other options or other grant opportunities. Or they could go out to ninety-nine-five.
Any other clarifying question about it's a green end? No? Public comment? No, back to the board for for the discussion or motion.
One quick thing, question, uh very, very first line of this chart will give agreement, do we need to change the executed date? Not executed of our. So with that change, I make a motion.
I'll second. Great. Move by Shannon, seconded by Jerry, all favor. Unanimous. Okay, recommendations for hire.
Okay, um you have a list of recommendations for hire there, for, see there, we have some, a temporary painter as well as C S C facilities and grounds maintenance as as well as other different positions.
Yeah, temporary painter, yeah, apparently that's been.
Playground supervisors, a lot of these positions are being filled, which is nice to see. A lot of these classified positions where in the past few years, we had a hard time filling, we're now filling.
So assuming this is not the standard from art.
Unfortunately.
We also have one guest teacher for your.
Great. Any clarifying questions off this one, besides beyond affiliations? Uh public comment? No, back to the board for for the discussion or motion.
I believe we accept the recommendations for hiring as presented.
Thank you, very. You'll be very, very seconded by Ray. Thank you. Out of district students.
First agenda, I want agenda ten, is out of district students, we administration recommends so three out of district applications for the following students.
Any clarifying questions about this one? Public comment? Back to the board for motion.
A move that we accept as recommended, um acceptance of pupils twenty-four zero seven zero twenty-four three seven zero twenty-four four six.
Move by Shannon, seconded by Ray, all favor. It passes unanimously. Okay, now I have, oh, out of district students.
Yeah, and this agenda item, administration recommends denial of district enrollment application for the following student indicated by number below the twenty-four, twenty-five school year because that another would exceed our eighty-seven percent of our credit which you have for that grade level. That is indicated in our Whitefish School District.
Okay, any clarifying questions about this one? Public comment? Back to the board for further discussion or motion.
Can you tell us what grade it is? Or which grades are full in general, I think?
I believe this is a from the middle school.
Grade is full.
I agree, except the out of district student.
Let's take it there.
Great. Move by Ray, seconded by Shannon, all favor. Okay, moving on to reports, trustee announcements.
I would just like to say again, congratulate the high school on wonderful veterans assembly. Uh that the students um performed and spoke beautifully and eloquently. And that was very touching ceremony. And I was especially touched at how attentive the the student body was. They were so attentive.
I agree, they were so respectful.
Yes, they were very respectful and.
And supportive.
Yes, and I had a friend who said, well, you're not honorary veteran, say, why did they go to school? And I explained the whole assembly and she said, oh, that makes me feel so good. I see why they went to school. I thought it was, it was really interesting. She she completely changed her mind.
You know, one thing Jake said is that this was the first year that students had done it, they funded every year. And I just think that's so cool that the students get to own organizing this and the veil to shine with their face. And it's, I think it's a really special event. Yeah.
And it reflects extremely well on um the school district and the high school particularly. And um the veterans uh really appreciate it.
I agree, again, our goals, right, action, like community partnerships and welcoming schools, really well done.
It was very well done. Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Ground, for facilitating that with your students.
Thank you for saying so. Teamwork at its finest.
Take the pledge. Any other trustee announcement? Okay, moving on to our superintendent report.
Okay. We have a a running agenda here with a calendar and boy, Jake did it again.
Well, I just want to thank you for going to your conference.
Yeah.
Sounds like it was really positive.
Yeah, I really enjoyed meeting with other superintendents, having very good discussions about opportunities and challenges that are involved in being superintendent of um mountains, towns. Different sizes, you know, three thousand students, two thousand, some Kelly arrived, right, and they have eight hundred students in their district, you know, versus Bayle had six thousand students. Thing is great to have conversations with all of them and learn from them. Um I really came back with some good information to think about for the future of your eyes. I also really felt it's really good to see things in action in other places and then say, oh. Hey, we're doing okay.
We're doing that too.
We're doing that too, and that's good, that's a good practice. Maybe we need to do more of that, because it is like it is good practice, or then also things, oh, that's something we could consider. They're doing that because it's addressing some of these issues, and maybe we could consider. So it's a great opportunity. I really enjoyed meeting with those other superintendents and learning from them and having some really good discussions. One of the topics was uh mental health and mouth. It was a really good discussion about that in our country and actually for us the world. There, and how that impacts schools, but also more than, more than just schools, impacts the community. How we, how we can do things um that are very positive, that we know from research that supports that, and and that is being, building quality relationships. Encouraging relationships and also encouraging um um a sense of purpose and engagement. A lot of the things that we do in school, in our schools could make you think, doing more of them. How can we do more of those good things? How do we, and and how do we engage more students and and more of our community? So it's great, good stuff. Really enjoyed my time there. Um the enrollment um information you can see is attached as well. Now, um we have some resignations there, you can see as well. Enrollment is really very similar to the start of the school year. Slight fluctuations in the different buildings and things like that. Staying fairly steady, right? Keep watching that. And we'll see this school year um and and as we've talked about before, as we move into next year, the high school will really say.
Yes.
They are aware of that.
One twenty-two to one eighty.
Discussions we're having about our high school and management are very common, for sure.
So hmm two-on-ones, we get the nineteenth one, because we're having a board meeting or?
Still have another um if I don't, uh we could cancel those due to having another work session.
We can, we can talk about that later, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Just, because the, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, I guess they're doubled up, aren't they?
Yeah.
And the third we have to hold up to? Is the K twelve connect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's something to discuss in the near future too, just about the frequency of those and maybe possibly returning to monthly. Few times, so, um but maybe for now, we'll leave them there unless.
Yeah, let me look ahead and see. Thanks for catching that, Ray.
Moving on, our Director of Business, Lucy Shea.
Thank you. Thank you. Briefings from the business department. Um the latest update is that or not, um it's time for another annual financial audit. I know it's. I know it sounds like we just did it, the, um, the auditors are moving, um, moving a little bit faster this year as far as scheduling their audits and reshuffling certain clients. So, uh, this is, uh, a little bit earlier than usual. Uh, which really is my, you know, I prefer to do it this way because, uh, I still have things, uh, from the last fiscal year, you know, more pressurized in my mind than once in February, right? So it is my preferred way and I've been working with, um, two auditors from Lining and Downey, um, so far remotely and but we will again have our onsite visit and the visit will probably be before Thanksgiving. Or if not before Thanksgiving, hopefully we get this. So it's, uh, uh, another thing that, um, is happening in the business department. Um, other than that, um, things are moving along, uh, quite well, uh. You know, we are where we should be as of, uh, the last day of October. Um, November is my, one of my favorite months of the year. That's when we're gonna get all the real estate. Ex revenue, uh, that support everybody, everything we need to um, as far as expenditures date, uh, everything is pretty much in line with prior, uh, performance.
Any questions for Lucy?
I just was wondering, because I remember this had come up, it's been a bit now, I think, but like the cost of gasoline and like just the things were cost more. Is that like you said, but now this year to the last year, it seems like they're pretty or have you noticed that being a challenge? Everything is, yeah, and all those buildings central. Like, I'm just curious how that impacts what you, how you shuffle stuff around.
You know, everything's going up. The reason why the percentages spent to date are fairly similar to prior, you know, because the budget was set higher.
Okay. So you just anticipated and, you know, and thanks.
Yes, no, nothing's going, nothing's even stabilizing. Unfortunately.
Yeah, so many of our sports teams made it to playoffs and that was sort of.
And they all went to the movies.
Yeah.
I know. Ways to get those transportation invoices and hotel bills. It, it's, it's really, uh, very significant. It is a significant impact.
Any questions for Lucy? Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you.
Happy November. Okay, consent agenda. Is there any public comment on our consent agenda? No, is there a motion on this one?
Will we accept the consent agenda?
Move by Jerry, seconded by Shannon, all favor. Unanimous in our last item.
Lucy, can I ask you a casual question?
Okay, thank you.
It's a software, a curriculum software, I think.
Yeah.